Good evening and welcome to the July 15th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session to consider the purpose and value of real property parcel number 24533-55-3-1 at 24 Westgate Park.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Before the roll call vote to enter executive session, let me state in executive session, the Select Board will consider the purpose and value of real property parcel number 245531, 24 Westgate Park. Discussing this matter in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. Would the court please call a roll?
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Ochkis?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Linda Escobedo?
Myself? Aye.
I note that the motion passed unanimously. The board will now convene an executive session and we will reconvene an open session at 7:00 PM. Okay. Welcome back and calling back to order the July 15th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I want to remind everyone that our meeting is being both broadcast and recorded. The first item on our agendas this evening is a consent agenda, which are town accountant's warrants, minutes from May 23rd and June 3rd, one day special license for Concord Museum on August 7th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, 53 Concord Turnpike, wine only, and Luke Hill Media, Inc., on September 30th from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM at 246 Old Road to 9iner Corner, all alcohol. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kate Hodges, Deputy Town Manager. Chris Carmody began last week and he's working in the Town Manager's Office as the Administrative Manager. He is taking over for Heather Butler and we are happy to have him. He comes to us from a private nonprofit where he was a paralegal for many years. He's pursuing his master's degree in public administration at Northeastern University. The complete streets meeting will be held next Wednesday through the Public Works Department. They're initiating a Wiki map, which will allow people to put specific issues that they have encountered, either with sidewalks or streets, on the map. So that more information will be out on that next week. The Public Shade Tree Program for the summer has concluded. 65 trees were placed in the right-of-way and for setback plantings. Proposals were also due this afternoon for the Climate Action Plan Consultant that was being spearheaded by Kate Hanley, our Sustainability Director. She will have a recommendation coming forward to the Town Manager's Office, which I will bring forth here. She expects to have a lot of community engagement and involvement in many departments and planning and seeing that out. Marcia Razmussen has informed us that the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail ribbon cutting for Phase 2B is scheduled for sometime in early September and she'll be sending out something more concrete later on the date and time. Fencing still needs to be installed along the track where the tee is and where the commuter lot is for safety reasons. And there are six signs that are in process of being completed and put up. Other than that, we'll be ready to open that leg and I have noticed a lot of people using that already. And Brookside Square has delivered their final plans for curb cuts for their parking lot reconfiguration. They're looking at Baherol Street near where Salt Buck Kitchen is and Baherol Street where it intersects with Commonwealth Ave. So that will make it a little bit more pedestrian friendly. Other than that, the only other news that we have is that unfortunately Andrew Marr has submitted his resignation and this Friday will be his final day and he will be missed a great deal. We want to thank you for your service.
Are there any questions for Town Manager? All right, well send thank you, Kate. Since Kate brought it up on behalf of the board, Andrew, you've been an absolute pleasure to work with and a very dedicated and effective member of our team and we all wish you the very best in whatever the next chapter of your life brings. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Hope you stay in touch.
Will do.
I don't have any real chair remarks other than to congratulate the National Park and the Walden Wood Project for a very successful bio blast that they had last a week ago Saturday. Hundreds of scientists, many people here traversing the land to find birds and plants and bugs and all kinds of stuff. It was quite an event. So the next item on our agenda is a 7:05 public hearing with a change of management associated with existing Section 12 Restaurant Alcohol License, a 99 Restaurant at 13 Commonwealth Avenue. Come on up.
Good evening.
So I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome. You tell us who you are, please.
My name is James Poitras. I'm the new General Manager at the 99's Restaurant over on 13 Commonwealth Avenue.
Okay, and are before us tonight?
To have my name put onto the liquor license in replacement of the General Manager was moved on.
Would you tell us a little bit about your background?
Well, I've been in the restaurant business for about 25 years. I've been with the 99's for five years. I was just promoted from the Fitchburg, Mass. location. Before that, I worked for other restaurant chains, Applebee's, Chili's. Took a little time off while my kids were younger and worked for a company called Service Master doing restoration work.
Where do you reside?
I reside in Lemonster, Mass.
Lemonster?
Yes, sir.
Great. Andrew, all the paperwork I know is in order?
Right.
We have all of the necessary supporting documents, right?
I just want to comment that it was impressive, the detail in which your company has outlined how bartenders treat the serving of drinks.
Yeah, we're very, you know, we're very conscious of the effect that alcohol has on people in the community around us, so we take great pride in making sure that we serve and take care of our guests the proper way. Now, my bartenders have all been around for a really long time. They do a great job. They're very aware of their guests and what's happening and if they need any assistance, myself and my team are ready to back them up at any minute.
So you'll be on the facility site about how many hours?
50 to 55 hours a week I work. I have another manager that works with me and a shift supervisor as well. And each one of us are what's called Serve Safe Certified. So we've taken our responsible service of alcohol tests and we've all passed and we're certified to serve and know the ins and outs of serving alcohol and the effects it has on people.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion to, well first, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Does the board have any questions or comments? All right, Linda?
I am moved to approve the application from 99 Restaurants of Boston, LLC, doing business as the 99 Restaurant and Pub located at 13 Commonwealth Ave. For the change of manager associated with existing Section 12 Restaurant, all alcohol license, the new manager, James Poitras, must be engaged in the actual management of the licensed premises as their main occupation and must be present on the licensed premises for not less than 30 hours per week during the hours when alcohol beverages are sold. Approval is contingent upon the ABCC approval.
Thank you very much.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to town.
Thank you very much. I can tell you, my father and my mom used to bring me down to this 99's when I was a youngster. It's nice to be back.
We're glad you're back.
Thank you very much.
So you'll know how to get here?
Yep, I spent a lot of time here, so I'll be able to find you guys, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a contingent public hearing, alteration of licensed premises associated with existing Section 15 Retail Package Store Wine and Malt License to remove entire second floor area of 4,542 square feet and portion of first floor, 980 square feet from existing licensed premises at the Concord Market at 77 Lowell Road. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please come up.
Good evening, my name is Jim White. I am one of the owners of Concord Market. I guess this is the third time we've got together on this. I'm pleased to say that last week, the Board of Appeals approved our request to use the second floor for various events and I think that was a precondition of your wanting to act on the application before you. So I'm hopeful that you'll now be in a position to act.
Thank you. Just for the record, Mr. Wright was here at our last meeting to go into the details of what the proposal was, so that's why there isn't any particular detail this evening, but we already went over that. Is there any questions?
I just wanted to, I know that we talked about the kind of uses that the second floor was going to be intended for and I think it might be helpful if, one more time, if you could quickly just articulate those.
The Board of Appeals' decision will require that the uses all be market-related, so that there will be things like maybe cooking lessons or cookbook authors or children's events associated with foods and things of that sort.
Okay.
So will there be catered events then in that space?
There may be catered events if an organization, again, related to food, would like to cater the event. It has, the real key is that it has to be a market-related event and we just can't come in and have a yoga class and be in the yoga studio business.
Okay. I just had a question. Are there any different regulations or requirements for parking for public events than for your regular?
Pardon me. The Building Commissioner looked into that question with the Board of Appeals and I didn't bring the technical analysis, but the end result, because there were less square foot, the building is smaller than originally approved, the number of spaces required when the building was built was 48, although we built a smaller building and 48, as it turns out, is the same number of spaces that's required under the analysis the Building Commissioner made for the use of the second floor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, on the matter before, so are there questions or comments from the board?
No, I think this has been thoroughly vetted at the CBA, so.
Well, we wish you good luck with it. Is there a motion?
Okay. I'm moved to approve the application from Concord Market located at 77 Lowell Road for the alteration of licensed premises associated with existing Section 15 Retail Package Store Wine and Malt License to remove the entire second floor area, 4,542 square feet, and a portion of the first floor, 980 square feet, from the existing licensed premises. Final approval is subject to the ABCC approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you very much and I hope you all enjoy it upstairs when you get up there.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you very much. Next item is considered a gift of land in the NRC associated with Black Birch 2.
Good evening. Good evening. Delia K., Natural Resources Director for the town and Jack McBride, one of the managing partners for Black Birch Development Associates?
Partners.
Partners. And we're here, I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Commission to request the board's approval of a 5.4 acre gift of land that is being conveyed by Black Birch Partners to the Natural Resources Commission in accordance with the alternative PRD that was issued in 2017. And that planned residential development or alternative planned residential development was the second phase in the Black Birch Development on Forest Ridge Road and is for additional 16 units. And I know that, I'm going to just pass these around if these are helpful, since they provide a little bit more, sorry, there's just one here. I know that in your package, you had the conservation restriction, sorry, the Conservation Land Plan shown as parcel A. This is a colored graphic and is perhaps a little bit more, a little bit more helpful to visualize what this land transfer looks like. So on this map, it shows as, it's outlined in red on the lower left of the plan and it's shown as parcels A and B, parcel A being 3.32 acres and parcel B 2.08. So together, those total the 5.4 acre parcels that were combined into the conveyance plan. This is a nice addition to the town. It joins existing conservation land and there are a number of trails that go through these neighborhoods. You can go up Forest Ridge Road, go through the conservation restriction land at the Phase 1, Black Birch 1, and then traverse the town lands along here through the newly acquired or gifted parcel and then along through here and then continue up towards Border Road. Hopefully, there will be some future connections with the former Star Matt property.
And this was, this was part of the warrant article that was approved at town meeting?
Correct.
All right, any, any questions?
No, I appreciate having this. I was trying to figure it out looking.
I apologize for not submitting that earlier because I know that these maps sometimes can be confusing and that having them colored up is enormously helpful.
It's very helpful to see the land the town already has. Because that's what I was wondering, where does this fit in that?
And I'll, oh, what did I do with my trail guide? I brought a copy of the trail guide that the Trails Committee has just completed for this and I'll leave it with Andrew, but it shows the trail connectivity for this area as well as the other town lands that are in the area.
I was going to say, because parcel B is practically inactive, right? So we.
Parcel B on this, on this is included in parcel A, so that is together the 5.4 acres.
I know, but I'm looking.
Sorry, the parcel B is.
Oh, that's a different parcel.
That's a different parcel.
It's not the, these two.
Green.
I see. Okay.
Any additional questions? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a 5.4 acre gift of land shown as parcel A on the plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Concord, Massachusetts, owned by Todd A. Pulis, Steel Thorough Realty Trust, prepared by Pearlie Engineering LLC dated March 8th, 2017, and recorded at the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 646 of 2017. Said gift was granted for conservation purposes in accordance with the special permit issued for alternative planned residential development on June 4th, 2019 by Black Birch Development Partners, LLC, and accepted by the Natural Resources Commission, acting as a conservation commission on June 19th, 2019 pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws 8C of Chapter 40. I'm wondering if that should read June 15th, which is today?
July 15th.
Yeah, sorry, July 15th.
So is the last line, the NRC accepted on June 19th?
Accepted.
At their meeting.
Right.
Okay, okay, fine.
June 19th is correct.
June 19th is correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. It's a great gift. I hope the town will make good use of it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Ms. LaFleur. Next is the approval of fiscal year 2019 year-end transfers.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Carrie LaFleur, the Finance Director. I have a handout going around and I apologize, but I warned you that I would be sending an update.
Yes, you did.
So the request before you this evening is to approve a couple of line item transfers in order for us to close our fiscal 19 budget. You will recall that the town's budget is approved in 39 separate line items and the only way that transfers can be made between those line items is either at a subsequent town meeting or with the approval of the Finance Committee and Select Board within the last, the last 60 days of the fiscal year or the following 15. So we're here on the 15th day following the end of the fiscal year requesting these transfers. I did present a version of this to the Finance Committee at its last meeting, which was the end of June, and it was based on what we had available at that time. Because of, the state law does require us to have this completed by June 15th, but it is difficult to both close the year and then get to both boards before June 15, July 15th. So at their next meeting, next week, I'll give them an update and there's just a slight difference. So at this time, we are in the process of closing and really have done a great job this year and I only have two line items to present to you to request a transfer. The first is legal services and the second is social security and Medicare. The first page is the actual transfer. The second page shows you the appropriation for each of the 39 line items and what has been expended and posted to date. You will notice that there's about 2.5 million remaining. That will be, we have one more process to go through before we close the year. So we've processed all of the bills that we have as of June 30, but there may have been some activities that incurred expenses. So over the next week, we will go through and we'll make encumbrances based on outstanding bills that we've yet to receive and then the balance will be the beginning of the free cash calculation for fiscal 19. So I'll just start with the second transfer because it's smaller and there probably won't be as many or any questions on it. So our social security and Medicare, we have a deficit of $1,962.35. And this is, we're making an estimate 18 months ahead of time when we put the budget together, but the actual expenses depend on who we have hired and when they work and whether or not they're a social security employee or not. And so we were off slightly and so we have a deficit there, but we propose to transfer from town employee benefits. Town employee benefits is money that we set aside to essentially pay any sick leave buyback upon retirement that is due for an eligible employee. And we had very low expenses in that account this year, so there's sufficient funds to transfer. We're requesting that at this time and then the balance of that account likely will be closed out at the end of the year. The second and more significant transfer is from legal services. There's currently a deficit of $54,462.47. If you go to the second page, you can see on line two that the original appropriation including the special town meeting appropriation was $350,000. I did go to the Finance Committee and asked for a reserve fund transfer of $225,000 and that's already taken off the $404,000. So the way, the way the transfer works is you, we don't pay anything directly out of the reserve fund. We have to transfer it into the line and then pay there. So the actual expenses were significant this year in part to the ongoing litigation and just the general legal activities. So that leaves a deficit of $54,462.47 and we would propose on page one to transfer that from the Finance Department, line eight, and specifically, it would come from the Treasurer Collector's Office. The reason that we have a significant amount remaining is we had a budgeted position that for most of the year went unfilled. Not that we didn't need it, but it just took quite a while to find the right candidate there, so we did have significant savings. So those are the two transfers that are being proposed. I'd be happy to answer any questions and again, I'll be taking this back to the Finance Committee for them to update the vote that they took at the end of last month.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. On that, I was looking at this, I think these are the sheets you perhaps gave to Finance Committee?
Yes.
And there's a difference, and maybe that's what you were just talking about, but I wanted to clarify. On the sheet you've given us, it says expenditure through 630 for legal services is 404,462, but on this, this other document, it says the expenditure through 627 was 578,617. So I'm wondering.
Right.
What's, how, how those, how you connect those?
Sure. So the, what was presented to the Finance Committee was prior to the reserve fund transfer. So the way that we have to record is the reserve fund transfer, they approved $225,000 to be moved from the reserve fund into line two. And so we reduce the expenditures in line two by $225,000. Also, since then, we had our June bills come in, both for general legal and labor and those weren't posted when the Finance Committee. So if you take, if you take what is shown there and you add $225,000 back to it, that is the full expenditure for the fiscal year.
So it's 629.
Yeah, it's, it was, yes, it is.
Is there, what's been spent so far this month, do you know?
The month of July?
Yeah. I know, you probably.
No, I don't know. We receive our bills once a month and I'm not, I wouldn't know until the bill comes in. I don't know if you have any.
Just a second.
So Carrie, when you refer to general legal and labor in this category?
Yep. Yes.
And how does this compare to previous years?
Well, this, this is significantly higher. The budget for many years was 225,000. It was bumped up in 19 to 250,000, then we had the additional 100,000. We typically will spend the full 225 or 250 just on labor. We have contract negotiations. The Planning Board might need an opinion on something, so we typically, the budget is really built on our day-to-day expenditures and doesn't really take into account much for litigation.
No anticipatory piece.
Right.
The answer to the question is about $26,000.
All right.
I have a couple of questions. What would happen if the Select Board did not approve the legal transfer? What would happen?
Then we would have a deficit in that account and I assume the Department of Revenue would, would write us up for something. I haven't experienced that before, so I'm not, I'm not sure what they would do, but they certainly would make note of it. I'm assuming we would receive a letter. It would be noted in our audited financial statements as well because that expenditure would be over the, what town meeting appropriated.
So is there a way going forward where we can get a tracking of this? Like at some point, we might need to go back to special town meeting or whatever, so that we don't get into this type of situation again, because the litigation may still be going on. So, like how much do we have appropriated in the current year?
We have $250,000. So I do, on a monthly basis, I do provide an update to the Town Manager so that that is available. It hasn't been provided to Kate, well, certainly through June 30, but at, once we receive our July bills and they're processed. our July bills and their process, I would give an update to the town manager, and that could be shared.
Okay. Would that be all right, Kate, if you could share that? And then, we'll ask Stephen again when he comes?
Yeah. I haven't, I think I received June's only because Carrie and I were actually collectively trying to get a handle on it.
Right.
One of the things that has happened, at least in the past several months, is that we used to have a ruling that the town manager had to provide approval before anybody could go to council, and that has been, or was loosely followed by some, and so, then for others, what was happening is it was a dialogue that was going back and forth, and so, if it was on the same issue, sometimes council would reach right out and maybe copy the town manager, and I think Carrie and I were trying to get a handle on, you know, staff asking questions of council that may be able to be answered by the town manager or somebody else to that effect. So, we tried to reel everything back in and say, could you, you know, get permission before going to council, and I think it's been relatively successful. Part of the issue is we were negotiating three contracts, and we had Labor Council assist with those. My hope is that we don't, we don't need to do that moving forward because either Stephen or I could, you know, represent. And I know that, you know, I took that over for dispatch and police, and I participated for fire, so I'm assuming that that would remain, and we would be able to cut out those expenses.
Our budget processes are different than the regional district, for example, where their budget is not a bunch of separate line items. They can make transfers.
Right. The school, CPS, and the district could, because they have, their budget is appropriated in one line item, so the superintendent would bring something to the school committee, a request to the school committee, and that's how the transfer could be made. Very similar to what we're doing here. We're just a little more limited in when we can process these transfers. That's the other difficult thing. It's not that we didn't know that we were over expended, but we are not able to bring the transfers forward until a certain time.
Within sixty days of a close, is that?
Yes. From, essentially, from May first until July fifteen.
Right. But I think it would be good if the Select Board keeps an eye on it this year, since we're liable to probably go over that 250 again. I would like to keep an eye on it if we could get the monthly report. And the other question I have is, you mentioned that Finance had an unfilled position most of the year, and I see there's also some.
Oh, in the assessors?
Well, in the police, fire, and especially in public works, there's quite a large surplus. Do you remember what happened there?
So, we can provide you with an update when we fully close, but at this time, there are a number of invoices that we haven't yet received that we know we will receive. So, over the course of the next week, we'll go through the process of encumbering funds for work or services provided or items purchased that we have not yet received invoices, and then we'll close.
These are not the final balances.
They're not the final balances.
Okay, okay.
It's really, it's very difficult with the timing that's outlined under state law. It would be nice if we could wait and bring it at the end of the month when we had everything, but we really can't do that.
Additional questions? Right, you'd need for us to move to approve this?
Right, the two transfers outlined.
Do we need to do them separately or just?
No, you can do them.
All right. Linda?
I'll move to approve the FY 2019 transfers as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Right. Review of the calendar for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting. Andrew, I look, but I don't, is there a hard copy? Jane's got her machine open, so that's all right. I had no particular questions, I just thought there'd be one. So, this, what we're looking at now and getting ready to approve is, you might recall that we approved the dates for the annual 2020 Town Meeting at our last Select Board meeting, and going to be April twenty-seventh, eighth, ninth, and thirtieth. And once we've made those dates, or specified those dates, then we can work up the dates for when the warrant will open and close and when the various public hearings will be in preparing ourselves for the Annual Town Meeting. And so, the document that we're looking at is that. And so, are there any questions or comments about it? Thank you, Andrew, for getting that done.
Oh, and I also would like to thank the town clerk, Carrie, as well. She played.
The town clerk, who's sitting in the back of the room. Thank you very much, Carrie. All right, I'm willing to entertain a motion.
One comment. It's very helpful to have this in advance. This is great, so we don't schedule something else. I do have one thing scheduled on December seventh. I'm not going to be able to make that Saturday meeting. I can't remember what you call it, pre-town meeting.
Open warrant.
Yeah, yeah, right. But I won't schedule anything on the other dates now.
No, the first meeting of the warrant is just really to help us get a sense of what's kind of coming. It's not real detailed. Linda?
Move to approve the calendar for 2020 Annual Town Meeting as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Update on our two next agenda items are really, the update on long-range planning initiatives. As you recall, the Select Board has been trying to set priorities and coming out of the long-range plan, and we've identified a number of those. I think the three that we're moving most directly on are affordable housing, which you recall the town passed a number of warrant articles at the 2019 Annual Town Meeting. And then, we had identified long-range capital planning and economic vitality as two additional items that we wanted to move forward on, and we've been having discussions on those. And for capital planning, Carrie has been taking the leave and putting together a draft, and so, we have the latest draft of that, so let me turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thanks for everybody who's been sending in comments. So, there are three, we're on draft four now. We keep thinking we're getting close, but there are still some unresolved issues, and they relate to these things called questions for discussion. And the first one is, in 2002 and '03, there was a committee called the Facilities Planning Committee that did some very similar planning to what we're doing now. We may not do as deep of an economic model and analysis, but basically, they looked ahead to see what are all the capital projects that might come along and how can we best time them? And they put together some recommendations, but they were not followed. So, one of the things that we want to look at is what happened? Why weren't they followed? Do we want to improve upon that process somehow? So, that's one of the items, and it kind of relates to these other two questions. One way of looking at this is to have a temporary task force, maybe for six months, that's just going to decide how should the town conduct capital planning? Or, maybe we want a regular standing committee that every year compiles and maybe recommends and updates it every year. What I've done here is I've put both of those into this draft as phase one and phase two, just for discussion here. And then, finally, there's debate on whether we want to compile all the information from schools and towns, and town facilities, or do we want to go beyond compiling and recommend as to the timing and maybe even the scope? So, those are the three things that need to be resolved, and I think once we agree on those, I think we're going to have a charge, because I think we've pretty much agreed we want to do capital planning, who should be on it, the purpose of it, et cetera. So, I'm not sure, Mike, how you want to.
We named three times, why don't we just pick each one of them up and see what you knew?
Right. And the one other thing I want to mention is, I brought my version that had, just in case we need it, that has the changes since last time. I think the version you have just has everything in one color. Okay. Well, maybe we should look at whether we want to have a temporary task force or a regular standing committee or both. And the reason I say that one first is because right in the beginning and the purpose, the very first paragraph says, "The purpose of the capital planning team," whoops, which is now committee, "is A, to develop a process for town-wide capital planning; B, use that process to develop a ten-year capital plan; and C, to update the plan every year." So, is that what we want to do? Want to do all three of those things?
Or just some of them?
So, I, in my own thinking, I took a step back, just to get the conversation started here. I took a step back and said, if we are, if the Select Board is setting up the charge for this committee, then are we assuming that the information in the report will come back to the Select Board for this, for this task that the committee will be doing? That was one thing I questioned as I stepped back. The other thing I thought about is that we've named positions within the town and the school as opposed to the expertise that we, and that's not atypical of how we set up our charges for many of our committees. But if, in fact, we're going to keep the task, both process and coming up with the content, whether it's compilation or priority, should we be thinking more specifically about the areas of expertise we need there? And I'm thinking about, not unlike what the 2002 plan did in terms of naming an architect, someone with financial planning, some with, you know, large, experience with large building facilities, et cetera. So, that was another thing I came up with as I was thinking about this. So, let me just stop there and.
Kate?
Well, I did look at the 2002, '03, and that was one boatload of work those people did to put that together, and I'm not sure that, since that time, we have five of our six, well, the three elementary schools and the high school are, have been newly constructed, and the middle school is the remaining one. I know that the school side's simple because there's five schools, and the town side has multiple sites, but given that we're going to be receiving a facilities report soon from the town.
Right.
I'm saying, let's use the information we have, essentially. But I think it's important to define a process, to do that evaluation, and then to update it, and in that updating process, we may be able to be better at implementing it, too, because it seems like this report in 2002 was done and then somehow got sidelined, but if there's an annual update, that keeps it more in the forefront of financial planning thinking.
Right. Just to clarify, the reason I put this question on the list is certainly, we don't want to repeat what the facilities group is doing or what the schools are doing, and we don't necessarily need to do everything that they did in that report. But what we do need to look at is, why wasn't it implemented, and how can we improve on that? There's no sense in having make-work that nobody implements. So, that's my interest in putting this on.
You know, that's for the committee. I think it's always good to look at previous procedures and reports that were in place and why they didn't work. We know, however, that twenty years is unrealistic in terms of being able to look out. I mean, that's a long horizon. There was a major economic recession in there somewhere, so there's already two things that I think probably, but I'm sure there are other things that people can identify as well.
So, does that mean you agree with Susan that an annual update might help in case there's an economic recession or something else happens that we don't foresee? So, do you favor having the annual update?
Yeah, in general, yes, depending on where we end up, yeah.
You sort of know my point of view, but my thinking along this when we began the process was that this would not be a standing committee, that this would be a committee that would work to develop a framework for how long-run capital planning would be done by the towns and the schools. It would have the right depth, it would have the right timing, it would have the right cost estimates, but, and that's what the committee would do. And once a committee finished its work, this would be something the Select Board, and hopefully, the school committee as well, would then have, instruct the town manager from the Select Board point of view, this is how we would like capital planning done. And the annual update, which I think is essential, or it just gets lost again in the dust, is that report by the schools and the town comes to the Select Board every year, and it comes, we have to work out the timing, but it comes in a way that when the Finance Committee then sits down to do its work, it's got this additional information about capital planning that it can take into account as it's thinking about setting the levy limit, essentially, and the recommendations for the budgets. So, from my way of thinking, I don't want the town and the schools do capital planning already.
Right.
Whether they do it in a way that the Select Board and the Finance Committee would deem appropriate for our purposes, that's, I think, what I don't know. And I think the one thing we, the one thing that we know from the town's point of view and even the school's point of view is there's a plan, but it's very, it's very flexible. How long have we been talking about the middle school? I mean, this has been going on forever, right? And that's not a negative comment, it's just, well, other things come up, and so, it's just a matter, and think of what the town is going to have to go through over the course of this next decade. There's going to be opportunities that pop up that we're going to have to try to figure out. Are we going to buy, rent, lease, build, renovate? Those are very complicated decisions. So, my thinking is a committee puts together this template and hands it to the town and schools and says, "Do capital planning this way with this kind of depth, et cetera," and then come back and talk to the Select Board every year, and that's the update, and time it so that when they've got their work done, the Finance Committee has got some additional information that they could use in trying to determine the levy limits and the budgets.
That all sounds really great, because there's this one piece that I'm not sure how it would work.
Stop, after you say, "That sounds really great."
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's this one piece where, and I think it's a really crucial piece, because the schools are doing a lot of capital planning, and the town has hired a consultant who is also going to be doing a lot of capital planning. But I think we're using the word "timing" differently. There's two sets of timings. There's the annual timing that you just referred to, so that when the Finance Committee does their budgeting. so that when the finance committee does their budgeting, they have this information in a timely fashion to make, you know, with their guideline process and all that. There's another type of timing, though, that I don't understand how it fits into what you just said. Which is, you have a number of capital projects to do, more than we can probably afford in one year. So how, it's town meeting, it has to decide, but they need some kind of article, or some, something to look at, to approve each year, as to, you know, which projects are gonna be done in year one, year two, year three, year four, so that, you know...
That wasn't missing.
Okay, where does that fit in?
That's one of the, that's one of the components of what the committee would come back and require of an annual capital plan. For example, we know the town has got office space constraints. We know the town has got public works issues. We know it's got public safety issues. So those are all things that have to be planned for. And those need to be laid out over time. When can you do them? How long could you postpone them? And you'd be able to develop a timeline for how these things could be staged.
Correct. But now you have two timelines, one from the schools, and one from...
And it comes together right here.
So the select board would then look at two timelines every year, and decide what to do?
No, no, it's not our job to decide what to do. That's, that's not our job. Our job is to provide the appropriate information, so that to find, make sure the finance committee has the appropriate information it needs for timing of activities, and for us to have a sense of when these things might occur. It's the town, a town meeting, that will decide whether we do it, or we don't do it.
Right.
Right? But if we went to the town with, let's say, a negative recommendation, we would be able to have a more comprehensive plan for why we don't think this should happen now. Because it could be put off to year three, which is when there's no other capital plans going on, and that would allow the tax levy to not spike, right? That's the kind of information that we don't have now.
So Carrie, Carrie LaFleur has pointed out previously that it all starts with financial policies, right? So is this committee going to also have that as one of the guiding pieces of information that they're working with? Financial policies in terms of, I'm assuming, borrowing, and, you know, how much debt we are willing, we try to carry at any one time, et cetera, et cetera?
You mean as guidelines for this?
Yeah, I think they would certainly have to look at those guidelines if they feel one of them should be revised. Maybe that's a conversation. But I think a lot of them come from Moody's recommendations, and the desire to keep a great bond rating, so, yeah.
So I raised that question, just to, in my own mind, try to get a sense of the scope of, again, thinking about the scope of what this committee is taking on, and what we're expecting from them.
So you're describing, it's not just a timeline, it's not just two timelines, you know, a school's timeline...
Or a combined timeline.
Ideally, the point is, two timelines that we merge as one, and then putting a metric on it that would be derived from, that would determine financial impacts that, that a standard body, Moody's, something else, would, might be interested in, versus how we've always done things. Because I think that we're a combination of things. We're not just, and I don't think I'm, Mrs. Carrie, please correct me if I'm wrong, but our guidelines, our guidance doesn't just come straight, standardly, or just strictly from external sources. There's some of it that comes from guidance, right?
I guess I would, I would think not. I guess the way I'm thinking about it is, when this report was compiled, and we had it in front of us, and we were then in a, in a position of trying to make a decision about, the town managers come to us and says, "I want to do X, capital-wise." And we've got this now integrated plan. And we're trying to find out if this is the best time and the best way to do this. That's when I would want to talk to the finance director about the financial implications in a debt service sense. But we should have something from the town that says, "This is approximately X number of dollars. It could be done as early as 2020. It could, it has to be done by 2026." Right, that, okay. And then we're debating, should we bring it to the town meeting this year as a warrant article? That's when I would want to talk to Carrie, and say, you know, "We've got all this stuff going on. Is there, is there gonna be a negative impact on our borrowing if we do this now, as opposed to a year from now?" And she may, or she may not know. I mean, you get out there very few, you know, very far, and it gets pretty fuzzy, in terms of these kind of impacts. But I wouldn't expect this committee to do it. I would expect us to look at it, and when we're trying to make decisions, that's when we would drag in expertise to help us understand. I would want them to talk about physical facilities. When, how much are they gonna cost? When do they need to be built? How long can we wait? Should we build it, should we buy it? Those kind of decisions.
So, do we envision this committee being staffed? Because as soon as we start talking about estimating costs and so forth, we may or may not have...
No, the committee's not gonna estimate costs. The committee's going to require that the schools and the town do this kind of cost estimation. So you can't say, "Well, it's gonna cost a lot." You gotta do more, more attractive cost estimating. This is, this committee, though, I'm envisioning, isn't doing cost estimating.
No, it's they're adopting a model that we already have, or, or could compile, given the two, the town's current planning and the school's current planning. So we're not reinventing anything, we're just...
Yeah, I don't want to reinvent it. I think what I've heard, when I've listened to the finance committee is, and I'm paraphrasing, I would say, "We don't have enough detailed information about these potential projects, or when they need to be done." That's what I have heard. So it's very hard for us, the finance committee, to try to manage the tax burden to the best as we can across a longer period of time, because we don't have that information. But that's, that's what I've heard from the finance committee. That's my take on it, but...
So Kate, I'll ask you then. In the facilities management report that we've yet to see, are there detailed cost estimates in there for...
There are for option C, which would be the major reconstruction or acquisition of larger buildings. There aren't necessarily for the internal things that we could do, the space mining factors. Because that didn't factor in whether we would hire somebody or do the work internally.
So the way that that happens, when you see option C, is if you were gonna generate X, you know, thousand amount of square feet, what that would cost? And is it emergency, is it BPW, is it general admin? Because those are different. But it'd give you an idea of, in millions.
But we don't have a way of looking at our very well-honed Band-Aid approach of... I like space mining, that sounds like amazing.
No, not necessarily. Although we, when we do those things, we can essentially look at past projects.
That's what I was imagining.
Floor two and a half A, we're calling it. If we were to do that on the other side of the building, we would essentially take the cost of what this was, and add 5% to our inflation.
You could also, you could also imagine it working for the kind of, what you're talking about, essentially the way the, it worked for the middle school. There was a lot of work done to try to get stuff squared away with detail. And then we came to a point where we wanted to do a really deep dive, called feasibility study. So, you know, you, you know, the, the kind of things I expect from the town are not gonna be $26,929.10. But there are gonna be for capital projects. When we get to it, we might decide, "Well, I think we really need a formal feasibility study, like the, like the schools did for the middle school."
Correct.
So you'll get some cost estimates. And then if we decide to move ahead with some of these big projects, we'll get feasibility studies, which will lead to, of course, much more detailed cost studies. And then you actually start building, and you get the bill.
I think what I'm, I'm hearing, maybe I'm wrong, is how do we, the schools have a much clearer, both objective and, and it's, you know, a building. The town is a compilation of approaches. And so the, the apples and oranges piece is, how do we put the town in a place where we can say, for instance, "We do need a feasibility study on a town campus." It's time, you know, how do we know that, that in scenarios A and B, we've hit that, that price point of spending, or potential spending, that now a, a deep dive is really the best early spending to give us the information to make that call? How do we do that?
Well, my...
I'm just saying, I'm asking.
My ten cents is, I'm just making this up. We're gonna hear from the consultants, TBA, on the 29th of our next meeting, right? So, correct?
Correct.
So sometime after that.
Oh, it is, it's August 24?
I think it's August 26.
Oh, it is, because they...
The next one is housing.
It's housing. They were supposed to be the 12.
I misspoke, that's not correct. Yeah, we're having the planning folks come in next time. So, but at some point, after we've heard from the consultants in the town, they're gonna come to us with a proposal of some kind. And that's when we might conclude, as a select board, this is all very interesting, but we really need a feasibility study here. Or not. I mean, or we, oh, okay, it's, that's within bounds, you know, they said it's gonna be $5 million, or $5.5 million. We don't need, let's go. So that's when, just like the school committee did, essentially.
Right.
You know, they had a, they had a project, and they looked at it, and then they concluded they needed to do a full-blown feasibility study. And then they came forward with that. So I would envision that playing out, you know, not the same, but...
Well, the reason I'm asking that question is because I want to make sure that what we get back on the 26th is gonna have the level of detail in scenarios A and B that it, that we will be able to...
Well, we'll have to see.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to see. And it, it might, or, I'm not prejudging it, might or it might not. And if it doesn't, we, we turn to Kate and say, "Go see if you can get us some more stuff."
It, it will for B and C.
Yeah.
A is essentially, you just move people's desks around, and it's zero dollars. But you'll find that in every scenario, that's inefficient. Doesn't help us.
So A is not a real option?
I mean, doing nothing is always an option. It's just not the preferred.
Right, right.
So, that's a long answer to your question.
I was looking at all three, these three items, all of which are, are good questions. And I keep coming back to, it's, it seems to me that you answer all of them differently if we're talking about a task force, a, a limited-time engagement, or a standing committee.
Right.
And I don't understand why we, well, I, I wouldn't understand. I think the greatest value, at this point, that's been established, would be to make it a limited-time task force. We can always make it a different call, if that's not achieving the goals. But it seems to me that the, making another standing committee potentially impedes the nimbleness of this, of the goals here. To feed, you know, it's, there, this task force, if we can call it that, is ideally feeding the select board and the schools.
I, I agree. Also, I mean, I'm very sensitive to, it's, it's, it's the town, and it's the school administration who are responsible for doing this. And I think, from my way of thinking, it's a committee that says, "That's your job, it's not our job. But if you want our support and help in getting some of this stuff done, we need to see it like this, kind of." And I don't know what that "kind of" means, but...
And that would be completely competing in, in in line with the recommendations from a sustainability planning, from the long-range plan. You know, being able to look at these things as one, instead of pieces.
All right, Terry, where are we here with?
Right.
Have you gotten what you...
Mike and Jane are saying, you are saying that you want it to be a temporary task force that develops the process for townwide capital planning. They develop, in other words, what should be on that template that you described, right?
Plus, say the words again, because it...
They develop a process for townwide capital planning.
Well, it's not just process. That's step A, B, C, D. But it's also, I don't know what part word is, but, you know, cost.
Right.
Cost estimates, timing...
It's data, it's putting all the...
They develop what's, what's supposed to be on that template, which is going to be all of those things, that, all, every project...
I just don't want it to be, "We do this, and we do that, then we do this." It's also the information content.
That sounds like the main thing they're gonna do, is develop a template to get all that information content. I think the only downside could happen if it becomes just a way of transferring what the schools and the town have at that point from their format onto a new format. And, and there's no, what is, you know what I mean? If they already have all the information, now we're just asking them to fill out another form. We don't, we, we don't just want another form filled out, right?
But an integrated plan, I think, informs everyone.
Right.
So that people are, you know, can, when we talk about cross-silo planning here, I, I think it ends up informing everyone, and it also gives the town a perspective that they don't always have at this point, because individual projects are going forward.
Right, I think, it's a compilation, and by, it also is a, a public forum. I mean, a select board meeting is the town's meeting to discuss these things.
Right.
Right now, the school committee's working on its case of this. And the town staff have been working on a piece of this. But there has been no public body that's had any connect, you know... So I don't want, I don't want to undermine the importance of collecting the data, because, you know...
Okay, so it sounds like there is a consensus for this charge to only be for a, a task force of maybe six months to figure out how to get all of that data collected in a certain standard template. And, and that's how this charge should be written. Is, is that, is that right?
Well, that's my perspective.
And again, I think that that, as I've said, you know, this is a first step.
Right.
We, there, it feels heavy-handed to create another standing committee right now. We don't know what we're gonna get.
So this task force might end up recommending a standing committee, but we don't know that yet.
I don't know what they're gonna do.
Or after we've seen what they've done, we go, "Oh..." Or after we've seen what they've done, we go, oh, well, maybe we just ought to continue this committee.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right.
What do you ladies think?
Yeah. Feel good about where we're ending up in the discussion here?
Okay.
But how do, how do we address, or how does the prioritization get addressed of what goes when? I mean, that piece of it.
Right.
If they're doing a template of, of a project or the, the schools and the town, then where's the merge happen?
Right.
That's-
But I'm assuming we're keeping that in?
The schools have their timing.
Right.
And I assume we're going to have a recommendation of timing. This, I, the way I'm envisioning this, this, this is unbiased, this doesn't have, the task force doesn't have an opinion.
Right, it's not going to make judgments.
It's not an advocacy space.
But I think what Susan's saying is the select board's going to end up with two sets of projects, two templates. And now is the select board going to do that merge?
It's going to have one merge.
Every year.
Yeah, the, the committee could ask the schools and the town to get it together as a single document for presentation.
That's what I want to do, that's because that is-
That's what we're, that's what this could do.
Yeah, but not the task force. The task force is only going to set up the process.
Task force would say, get it together and produce a single document.
Right. And this is what we want in that document.
Who's, who's going to put that single document together?
The schools and the town are going to do that.
Okay, so then you're back to-
It's not going to be hard, it's, it's going to be the timeline that they have to lay out. The independent projects are going to have their own cost estimates and timing.
So you, if you have an integrated timeline, you may have two or three projects in a stack.
Right, right, right. So the schools and the town are going to get together and merge?
Well, I don't know what the task force is going to recommend, but that's one thing they could.
Or they're going to figure out how to get these things merged, okay.
And our job is just going to be, when we see this, as we go forward to talk about warrant articles and as the finance committee goes forward to try to do their work and the school committee goes forward with their work, we've all got more information now. And it would be a legitimate question, it seems to me, gee, couldn't we move one of these projects?
Right. Okay.
And what would be the impact if we moved A, B, or C? And how far could we move C so we could spread this tax out? Or we can't, I mean, okay, then we gotta do what we gotta do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, that's great. All right.
Does this mean we're going to see another draft?
I guess so.
I guess, I, certainly, and that's fine, I think working on these things are, I think, a good thing to do.
It's kind of a big thing to-
Yeah. So next, speaking of big things.
And I'd say, I'll try to get it out again a week ahead, and if you have more comments that you want to add, if, if Andrew isn't here, who do we send things to?
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that way, when we come in two weeks, we will have something that people-
I'm happy to, I'm-
Yeah, I was going to say, we can, we can-
I'm happy to take, if you want to send it to me, I'll make sure-
Okay.
We figure out how to get it out.
Just remember one direction, right.
Yeah. And so it looks like we're going to relatively soon have a task force that we're going to want to see, so we might as well, the public listening, anybody who's interested in this particular project, get a green card in and we may become a colleague. Next, economic vitality, Susan.
Um, I put together a draft, which you all have, and I think there's copies on the table, of a, an economic vitality advisory group. And it's tied quite closely to, I won't read everything, but it's tied quite closely to big idea one in the town plan about, uh, strengthening and, um, connecting businesses to cultural, historic, and civic resources and develop coordinated efforts to, to, um, to provide diversity or have, um, vitality. And it's keeping those storefronts filled, organi, getting the tourists into, uh, not just go to the bridge and the orchard house and a couple of other things, but to have a Concord experience that, that, and also to, um, combine forces, because it's, in the tourism area, at any rate, there are a number of separate organizations working, working on it, the Old North Bridge, I mean, the, uh, the National Park, the museum, the, uh, umbrella, and if we could combine efforts, it would reduce duplication and we, and it would come up with a product that I think would be better than any individual would come up with. So, here's the purpose and goals, purpose and goals. Oh, purpose is to define, define economic vitality, that means something different to many people. But how does it apply to the three retail districts? That's, that's something, we have to get a common language for that. And develop strategies to sustain the character of the retail districts, suggest ways to enhance the visitor experience and tourism, explore and recommend revenue sources such as public-private partnerships, grants, et cetera, and make recommendations as to how the town can support the business districts with, with existing resources. And explore the benefit of, of looking at what, what's being done regionally that we could tap into or, or learn from. So, the membership, well, this is the, the suggestion, seven members, uh, the term of office will be three years. The membership shall be as follows, one commercial property owner, one owner slash manager of a local business, and I mean, one, one of those businesses in one of the three districts, the boots-on-the-ground person that's there every day and runs the business, uh, one member of a cultural organization or historic, one representative of the planning department or former planning board member, because part of the conversation we heard last meeting was about, um, the difficulties businesses have establishing themselves and the, and, so if there's a planning presence, that would help. The town visitor slash tourism manager, and I was just going to ask Kate, is that, is that position still open? Is it open or are you?
We have, uh, we're going through replacements with a candidate as we speak.
Great. And two community members. The advisory groups show elected chair, keep minutes, post-meet, you know, up, adhere to all the open meeting law regulations. And so their duties are to analyze the goals and report to the select board with specific recommendations that can be implemented to support those goals.
Um, it, the, the first thing that, thank you, this is, um, a great, a great draft.
It's a first step.
But it's a first step, and that's always the hardest one. I think that, um, on membership, a couple of things jump out at me. Having only one owner or manager of a local business, um, I think that, I think one of the things we've heard a lot of discussion about in, in, at town meeting and in, in, um, select board meetings and in other meetings is the importance of, um, the variety of retail businesses that we have. And, um, that, you know, we, we know both, because town meetings handled it twice, that the franchise business, uh, component is real, existent, but is treated, there's concern about its, its role in each town as well. So I, it strikes me that we might want to have more than one, uh, per location.
What, uh, one from each of the?
Maybe one from each category, I don't know, but I'm just saying, because-
Yeah.
Otherwise, I could see a West Concord presence being very different from a Concord center, and I don't think that's true, nor do I think it's the goal.
So you're suggesting two reps, two, two people in that category that may be from any of the three districts?
I don't have a, a specific answer number.
Yeah.
But I, I think that we want to have more diversity than this could, and certainly more diversity locationally than this might.
I mean, this is, this seems limited in number in the one space that is probably most vital- The central piece of it.
To the central piece of this discussion.
Okay. So more business owners, okay. And what I didn't bring up, but we all did get a, a memo from, um, Jane Obegi, I hope I said-
Obaggy.
Obaggy, from the Chamber of Commerce, and she had suggested that as well, um, and that we cover the districts, representation from the districts.
The cultural districts.
The cultural districts, yes. Uh, and she also suggested someone on the chamber.
Su- Susan, thank you for doing this. Was there a reason that you, in your background, was there a reason you limited this to retail, sustainability, and tourism?
Well, what were you thinking? Uh, yeah, I, that's what I thought the focus was, because one of the things we wanted to do was keep those storefronts filled and keep that, the three retail districts vibrant. And tie it in with-
The cultural.
The cultural and the historic and the tourist aspect of it.
So I, I was going to report on this under the liaison committees, but it's, I think, relevant here. We had, the ZBA had a real interesting situation, um, the other night, not situation, but discussion, which sort of highlighted for me the tensions that exist between our historic resources and providing access to the public to our historic resources. Keep, bringing in more people in town to keep economic vitality for our retailers. Stewardship of our historic resources. And both neighbors and interested parties who may support any one organization, um, feel strongly about stewardship, not at the expense of economic vitality necessarily. And the additional tension, and there probably others, but the additional tension of, um, nonprofits trying to be creative in, again, providing access to their particular resource, um, but also trying to, uh, keep a healthy bottom line for, uh, just as the storekeepers want it. So here were all these different interests in the same room at the same time, talking about, in this case, some additional programming at the Old Mans. And I thought, um, and there was a public interest represented as well, not to mention, in this case, the National Park Service, uh, another non, another nonprofit with a competing, competing interest with another nonprofit. So, um, what that highlighted for me is the need to keep the membership broad in this case. Um, and keep in mind, uh, uh, for me, that just highlighted, we have five or six categories right there, that all impacted what the retail community is looking, and the nonprofits are looking for.
So you, are you saying more representation from, they're right now, it, it's fairly, yeah, it's a, it's a small group.
But, so you're saying if there would be representatives from, um, cultural and historic organizations?
Right, and maybe you pick a big and small, right? A, a smaller one and a larger one.
Okay.
In addition to the geographic representation.
It's our diversity of cultural organizations as well as our diversity of retail.
Because the key to this is going to be striking the right balance.
Right.
Between all of these interests. Some are synergistic.
Right.
But some could create some potential, uh, trade-offs that would have to be made. So I think, I agree with Linda, I think we need as broad a representation on this committee as we can get, even to the-
And even if it's a larger committee?
Even if it's, even if it's, even if it's larger than we might like.
Well, we've got seventeen on the school building committee.
Okay, there we go.
Let's go for twenty-five. Go for a record.
No, I, I agree, because I think the compensation of the committee, the, the stakeholders represented in that kind of, you know, predict the, you know.
They determine the-
They determine the outcome.
And the, um, the number of solutions it's going to provide.
Well, I'm hap, I, I think it's, for me, it's easier to add more. This is like the bare minimum of what you could get by with, so that's, I'm certainly, um, willing to, to look at those and enlarge it based on that.
And, and like the other committee charge, um, one of the first questions I asked myself was, was there going to be staff for this committee? And the reason I ask that is, when you look at, envision Concord and you look in the back where all the tasks have been laid out for economic vitality, um, a lot of them suggest that we need to find funding, we need to find a source to provide this resource. And s, hopefully, some of, uh, the participants in this committee outside of the town will be able to identify some of these resource categories. But more often than not, uh, when you looked at those, um, action items in the back, where we keep coming back to an economic coordinator is going to provide the resource, is going to write, find the grant resource.
The grants manager, yeah. Development officer.
Or an economic development, I mean, the, this group could just come up again with, well, let's just get an economic development coordinator to do all of it. And that's not really what we're looking for. We're looking for the committee to figure out some of it, including how to pay for any staffing. And that's much harder than just sort of delegating it to some expert.
Sure, yeah.
Well, we've heard, we've heard lots of suggestions over my time on the board of stuff, that I think that we, we could do, but I think the importance of this committee is to get it organized, to have it composed broadly so that the inherent conflicts in some of these ideas can get worked out and we can search for those that have, you know, multiple victories in them.
Yeah.
We, we have a lot of tourists who are already here in the town. Are we-
Exactly.
Are we taking advantage of that opportunity as opposed to, let's mount a tourism campaign?
Tourism mining.
Tourism mining.
Well, I think that was, yeah, that's what we were talking about, or, uh, before on this, was that there are, tourists are coming. Why can't, how, why don't we take the best advantage we can of that situation? Not necessarily making it a, our top priority, you know, the town's top priority, to attract more tourists, but to maximize-
Yeah. And then managing that on top of stewardship, which is really important to all of us and-
I, I failed to mention with my long list a little while ago, that transportation was an additional tension.
That's, yes.
The, the Old Mans was, um, trying to follow up on some of the town suggestions in this area, is proposing off-site shuttle to town. But then there were all kinds of questions about that.
Where.
Yeah, where.
Yeah, where.
And what was the impact of the off-site shuttle coming, going to be for the immediate neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. So the transportation piece is another, um, some kind of representation.
It is, and I- Yeah, I, it didn't include that, I was, because the transportation is going to cover, is going to intersect at a lot of points.
But I think we've heard enough that even though it's a, it's its own thing, something in there that says, you know, the role of transportation in accomplishing our goals, I mean-
Right, okay.
To, to not talk about transportation.
Just as it should say in our, um, in the, um, the previous charge, we, we'll have a ma, a metric for the, you know, the impact, uh, on transportation. So for instance, the schools already look at it, um, and when and if we get into facilities planning mode here, you know, if we're weighing, um, campus versus something else, one of the things we have to look at is transportation.
Right.
So it's going to be-
Yep.
Ideally, I'm not going to have to do anything with transportation, because it's going to be- to be. Every other.
You picked it, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that under the purpose and goals, it should be spelled out as another one of these purposes, that they actually, you know, research and suggest ways to get more people to the centers, to deal with shuttles or parking, or whatever it's all going to be, that I think we should say it right here.
I think examine the role of transportation in accomplishing our economic vitality.
That's it, right there.
All right. Now, I do note in the audience, someone that I associate with economic vitality, and I just want to check to see, Kristen, do you have something you'd like to say?
Well, I.
You've got to come up here, though. I know I received a letter from you about it, so. You can bring anything you like.
My name is Fritz Kusen, and I live at twenty-seven five Concord Green. And I appreciate Susan's hard work on this. It's always late to get, difficult to get something launched like this. But I did have some thoughts, Susan.
Right.
Going to belabor it tonight, because you're all tired, and it's late, and you haven't finished your agenda. So I'm going to offer just a couple of things. One is, I think the committee is too small. I actually came up with seventeen. And I'll be glad to share that with you quickly and the rest of the, of the board. In the first place, there are actually four retail districts. You're missing one, and that's Nine Acre Corner. There's about eight merchants out there, one of whom, of course, is our beloved Steve Merrill. And very important pieces they are. So we need to, if we're going to do an all-embracing program, we need to think about four places, not three. The other thing, I, I have sort of a scribble thing here. The elephant in the room has always been Concord Center. And I've been involved for fifty years in trying to figure out a formula so you could gather the three areas that we're talking about initially, how we could gather them under the same umbrella and have it make sense. I don't think I ever found that formula. It's very hard to make something that's common and workable for all the areas. Maybe somebody else has a magic formula, but I never found it. And so I think we have to recognize that the elephant in the room is the, is Concord Center. Everybody thinks, when they think business and retail and all the excitement above and so on, they think Concord Center. So I always thought, well, it's interesting to watch these areas perform their own magic. West Concord, to me, is a miracle what's happened. I have good thoughts on why that's happened, but formula business is not one of them. However, that's another issue. So I think we need to think very hard about how much we want to try to make them all under the same umbrella, and how much we'll be banging our head and getting frustrated and decide it's all not worth it. So we need to find things that we can agree on as a group and work with those, but we also need to be conscious and aware that there are a lot of differing feelings, opinions, pride, all the other stuff that goes into these things. And we have to acknowledge that possibility and how we can handle that within the large framework that we're building here. I said, I said West Concord seems to have taken on their own course with the West Concord Advisory Committee. And the others, not so much. And I said the committee needs to be much larger to include, and I came up with a sort of a ballpark estimate here. They need to include four merchant property owners in each area. So that's eight. We need one representative from the museum, and I picked the, the main cultural institutions here. And we've never had that as a part of the formula, because they get very testy about their, their place and whether they get more visitors than the other place. Orchard House gets about thirty to forty thousand visitors. Well, the man says, well, you know, so big deal. And the museum says, well, here are, are numbers. So you've always got this sort of.
Tension.
Pushing and shoving that goes on with the museum. But they're a huge piece of Concord, and to the extent that they can be accommodated in some way and infused into this whole makes, makes eminently good sense. So we need them. So I have four of those, represented from the museum, Orchard House, the park, we get Nancy back, the park, and the Old Mans. The ability to separate the four areas into subcommittees might be something you want to incorporate. In other words, if we get in and we find, as we work with this large group, that we can more effectively sort of help coordinate, administer, and supply and support separate entities for each area. And we can find, again, a way to do that so that they feel included, because this is very important, that they need to feel a part of a, part of a mix. I said two at large. Whatever. The Director of the Chamber of Commerce should be included, because she's got a whole constituency that is right in the middle of all of this stuff. And I said the Planning Department would be nice to have somebody involved, because so much of what goes on is relevant to the Planning Department. And then my other question, my last question is, why, if this is only an advisory committee, do we need a whole bureaucracy of notification? What was it? Open meeting laws? Why do we need all that stuff if it's only an advisory committee? They have no power, no authority, and it gets in the way.
Sure does.
So I'm, I'm thinking.
I was Susan baseball.
Unless it's. Susan. I'm going to block your parking space, I know where she is. Anyway, if there's any way, Michael, that this can be obviated, detoured, worked around, I think it would be marvelous, because it slows up the process and it gets terribly in the way, and it, I'm not sure whether it's really necessary for this committee as it's defined. However, that's for you guys to decide. And then I said, who is the town visitor and tourism manager? Is that what he's being called?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well. Michael and I had a discussion about, or I had a discussion, and Michael very kindly listened to it, read it, and returned a lovely note to me, thanking me. So, thank you, Michael. And really, that's, that's what I had. If Susan would like, I'd be glad to sit down with her.
I would love to do that.
And learn some of this stuff, because I have put it through it. I don't want to belabor any of the pitfalls that I ran up against, or that our groups ran up against. I don't want to belabor that point, because there may be different attitudes today. Who knows? Anyway, I'd be glad to sit down with you if the committee thinks that would be helpful.
Yes.
And see if we can come up with, with some things that, that really you can get your teeth into.
Thank you, Fritz. I really appreciate it, thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you first.
So Susan, I take.
Having this.
I do, but I want to ask Fritz one question. When you're talking about four, about subgroups.
Yeah.
Based on locations?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought you meant, all right.
I want to, I would want to keep that as an option. In other words, everybody understanding when we get in and we start working with all of this, how is it going to work out, actually? Are we going to find that there's this sort of internecine harassment and haranguing going on about who's more important than the other? Or can we really do something for these individual groups more by admitting that, yes, we understand that each group is different, and each group has their own story to tell, and we want to facilitate that? And we do it, you know, as part of the process, so it doesn't look like we're dumping them under the bus.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Lady Jen.
Do you have enough to.
I think I've got.
Keep you busy for a while.
Yeah, I do.
Susan knows where I live, so.
Yeah, I do.
All right, so the next, so you'll be back to us with a second version of this.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a letter of support for House Bill six sixty-three, an act allowing seventeen-year-olds to vote in town elections and town meetings. As you recall, the town passed this warrant article a couple of years ago now, and Mr. Graham is the sort of author of that, and he's brought this to our attention, and he sent me a draft letter that was written, I think, by a representative staff. I took the liberty of amending it, but I think it meets your needs. And so with the approval of the board, I'd be happy to submit this letter. So are there any questions or comments about it?
Well, I don't think I'd be allowed home.
Say what?
So I move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit the letter of support for House Bill six sixty-three, an act allowing seventeen-year-olds to vote in town elections and town meetings. Letter substantially is drafted.
Say a second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a similar task, not similar topic. We received a letter from the Air Force Base informing us that they were considering off-base, off-base space leasing, and would like us, if we had anything, to comment on that. And so what I would like your permission is to send and transmit a letter to the Air Force Base about off-base space leasing.
And what are you going to say?
Well, I think that's, you know, great, it's a little hard for me to get my arms around, the base is just profoundly changing in terms of its operation. It's never had a flying mission, it's always been a technology mission, but now they're housing people from Navy and the Army, and they're working substantially with Lincoln Labs, which is undergoing enormous building projects. So there's a, a whole lot of additional boom activity going on over there. And so they're just running out of space, and so they're going to be exploring it. And I think we should respond by understanding their problem, letting us know how we can be helpful to them, and trying to put them in touch with folks around town who might be able to assist them. So that's essentially, I don't have the letter drafted yet, but.
Terrific.
That's it.
Sounds good.
All right, terrific. So I move to authorize the, sorry.
I would, I just had one question in their letter. It says they're proposing to relocate a number of Air Force personnel, and I would like to get some kind of handle on that, are they, they might not know really yet, but they probably have some kind of ballpark, like maybe a hundred people, thousand people, like I have absolutely no idea.
My understanding is they don't exactly know yet.
Right.
But I could certainly follow up, the base commander is perfectly.
Right, to ask them to give us some kind of a range, because I think that would help look for space, too. Do they need more than one location? Do they need it for five hundred people, or whatever?
Is it families? Will they have school and children? I mean, this is, these are all, once they leave the base, I don't know whether the base is intending to educate them still, but.
It's, it says in the letter, a hundred and eighty-nine personnel.
Right, but again.
That's.
Oh, okay.
That's Air Force personnel, maybe, so does that mean.
What's the breakdown, yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point. So it's not just office space, they're looking possibly for housing, too.
For housing. And I think it'd be straightforward to say a concern would be schools.
Yes, yes.
But they do have on-base.
On-base school.
Okay.
All right, so did we?
So I move to authorize the chair to sign and transmit a response letter to Hanscom Air Force Base, scoping letter for off-base space leasing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Public comments. Sorry to keep you so long. Sorry to keep you so long.
Lansing Old, six oh seven Lowell Road, I want to say that Andrew Mara is an exceptional person. Your legal bills are mostly for the Esther Brooke Woods lawsuit. You're going to go way over budget again this year on Esther Brooke Woods lawsuit. The risks you take is you may lose, and if you lose, the landowners can shut the property down. You will not have any access to the woods. If you win, you still are subject to private property rules and regulations, so you will not win either way. So just be careful what you do.
Thank you. Committee Liaison Report, Susan.
If you decide to go to eminent domain, you're going to deal with the state, as well as Harvard University, all over again.
Susan?
Yes, I went to the Planning Board on the ninth, and we'll be hearing from them at our next meeting. They're working very hard on potential actions they may want to put on, on the town warrant that support affordable housing. I also went to the Cemetery Committee the following night, and they did, they're looking at, all these committees are looking at goals for the coming year. But they talked about the dedication, you know, did a post-mortem on the dedication of the Melvin Memorial, which was very well attended and received. And they have a new member that joined, and they're looking for a new member, another new member that's going to join, so they'll have a full complement. The Planning Board is still needing a member. There is a green card that was being followed up on, but I don't know, I have to see what the status is, but it's still out there. On July eleventh, the school committee, the middle school building committee met, and with a quorum, and appointed a subscommittee to issue an RFS for an OPM. I'm learning the new alphabet, a request for services, and then outlining the characteristics, the qualities I want for owner's project manager. So that committee will continue to meet generally every other week, they'll have a little scheduling changes for the summer, but every other week in this room at seven thirty on, what was that day? Thursday mornings, Thursday, every other Thursday.
They elect chair.
They elect, yes, we elected two, co-chairs and a vice chair, we need a clerk. The co-chairs are, the architect lady, I'm sorry, I have to pull out my notes. I don't have them. Yes, there are two co-chairs and a vice chair. The vice chair is Pat Nelson, who's sort of supporting. The co-chairs are.
Tim Holt.
Thank you. Tim Holt.
Don Guerello.
And Don Guerello. Don is an architect who builds schools. Tim is a longtime, was a longtime resident of Carlisle, but served as selectman there as well as on the High School Building Committee and on the Carlisle School Building Committee. So those are intact, we have to find a clerk for the next meeting. But yes, that was the main, big accomplishment.
Thank you.
Oh, one more, Historical Commission. They're setting goals for the next year, and they're going to try to focus on the demolition delay bylaw and see about changing that. Or, and I don't know what ways, so that, that's part of their deliberation.
So I already commented on the main issue for ZBA.
Mm-hmm, okay. Terry?
I attended the picnic in the park, it was very well attended, great time by all, and I especially liked the hot air balloon, took my grandkids up in that, I think it was a rematch that had those balloons, that was great. And then I went to the Board of Assessors. The main topic was this new. The main topic was this new land donated recently to the Mass Audubon Society. And it's a little bit technical, but the upshot is land owned by a nonprofit is tax-exempt. And the whole property is tax-exempt if the buildings are occupied. And they're not all really occupied now. There's a two-year grace period. So the Board of Assessors is going to send all the detail of this to the Audubon to make, to say, you know, you need to be strictly in compliance with this if you want to be tax-exempt. And they'll have 90 days to submit for a special permit with the zoning Board of Appeals. They have to, in other words, have a plan, what they're going to do with the mansion that is up there. And then I attended the CSET, Comprehensive Sustainability and Energy Committee, and the bulk of their meeting was talking about a new program that's going to be coming out at the Light Board for residential solar rebates.
Okay. Ter.
I spoke to HDC, actually, earlier today to check in. I've been away for work travel. And the positive news from Ms. Gill and from the board has been that while there's been a lot of time spent on the library plan, I think the sense is that, that there is recognition of a number of the concerns, which have been largely focused on the, with the connector building and its visual impact on the historic street, and specifically the windows and the skylight, both of which it sounds to me are in process of being addressed. The paint color of the buildings, of the other additional building, and the parking lot, all of which it sounds like are finally starting to reshape. I can't speak to how this will be received, but it sounds like there, there's some elation there. In terms of the NRC, they are focused, well, there are two points of excitement. One, the canoe launch project over in West Concord is, is nearly complete, actually might be complete, and thanks in part from the National Park Foundation, $40,000 grant. They've got a parking lot now, gravel, so it's pervious.
Where's that located?
It's on, it's on Baker Ave, just as you, it's just the other side of the river. So in other words, it's a, it's before, I think, is it 290 Baker Ave? Yeah. It's in the little pocket there.
Okay, okay.
It's right, yeah, the first left, after you turn onto Baker Ave.
Okay, great.
And it's, there's a parking lot, there's ADA picnic access as well as regular picnic access, a little closer to the launch. And then the other big news is that the $270,000 associated with the White Pond Restoration Project has gone into, has had some significant impact. The old concrete staircase has been fully replaced with wooden structure and railings. The, there's also a post and beam fence going along where there used to be some temporary fencing to delineate the trail and access points. And I think Delia was really excited by the fact that the erosion, which is what a lot of this was done to control, has really been abated. And, and feels quite strongly that the impacts on the watershed, on White Pond, of that have been significantly better.
So can I just have a quick question? So the cyanobacteria.
This is all my station's quote in the back.
Yeah. The bacteria or the closings due to the...
Blooms.
Yeah, the blooms. Is some of that from runoff from the land, some of the cause of that? Or is it, so I'm, I'm just asking because you're talking about...
This is not the White Pond Beach Association piece, and I, I think that every report that I've looked at have multiple points of potential direction from that runoff. But yes.
Yeah, so that's part, so controlling that is important in that picture.
That was why this process was begun in 2015, to significantly repair the town's land. I mean, that's what we, that's what the town can do.
Right.
At that point, we didn't own the beach association.
I attended the municipal light plan meeting on Wednesday, a couple, a lot of, always a lot of agenda items there, but the two I think that were more important were, had long discussion about the power agreements, which they agreed to keep confidential at this time. And then there was an update of their strategic plan, and it's coming along and becoming very, very detailed. I also attended Hugh Cargill Trust Committee Meeting, a number of items, but two, they're continuing to work on reconciling what they give out through the trusts and what comes out through the tax fairness and trying to get those court away. And then also they considered whether or not drivers' ed expenses were something that they would entertain in support of families in town who are in need. You'll recall that they do summer camps for some families, and so isn't the same.
That's wonderful because as somebody who's deeply aware of just how expensive drivers' ed has become.
Yeah.
And also for the adults as well, because you're required to...
So they're, they're making progress on that. So in the miscellaneous correspondence, I received correspondence from Mrs. Hines about 5G. She wanted it to be an agenda item for us. I told her I was talking to folks in Burlington who've done something, and I'm trying to get ahold of the woman that made the presentation, I think at your house meeting. I essentially said I need to get a little bit more on top of this.
And I think I mentioned to you that we have two PEG access committee members who have independent, separate of their committee work, have expertise that they were very interested in.
Maybe I could talk to them then, because I, before I get it in front of us, I need to know a little bit more about her. I'm just going to be, you know, overwhelmed, I won't know what's going on. So then, committee nominations.
Nominate Diana Kleimer of 13 River Street and Robert Monroe, 1400 Lowell Road, to the Concord Center Cultural District Committee; John Harris, Budget and Purchasing Administrator to the Concord Middle School Building Committee; and also Eve Eisenberg of 833 Old Road to Nine Acre Corner to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member. And Todd Benjamin, I thought Todd Benjamin had already been nominated.
No.
No.
No, he just put in his green card yesterday, and he apologizes it took a while, but...
Todd Benjamin of 333.
He had submitted it, and watched more about the trust and hadn't gone any further than that, but now that he has said his interest in that committee, he would be the representative from the funding committee to be the fifth person on that.
That's what I was saying there.
And then close that committee out.
And Todd Benjamin of 333 Sudbury Road to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee.
All right. And then committee appointments.
Committee appointments. Move to appoint Susan Curtin of 169 Holden Road, Road; Kristen Morganti of 136 Baker Avenue; and Tara Edelman of 357 Neshadik Road to the Library Committee for terms to expire May 31, 2022; Lee Smith of 1836 Main Street; and Keith Bergman of 56 White Avenue to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee for terms to expire January 15, 2020; Peter Ward of 29 Pilgrim Road; and Diane Proctor of 57 Sudbury Road to the Community Preservation Committee for terms to expire May 31, 2023; Theo Kindermans of 252 Fairhaven Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals as full member for term to expire May 31, 2022, effective August 9, 2019; Russell Hughes, Schools Facilities Director to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire upon completion of the project; and John Brady of 105 Lexington Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire August 8, 2019. And this represents the second extension because of some summer quorum issues for the ZBA. So we're just expending, extending his term by one additional week.
To allow him, okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I just have a question.
Excuse me?
I just have a question.
Please.
To nominate, the appointment Peter Ward to the Rec Department, it looks like he's already served two terms.
No, no, he's being appointed to the Community Preservation Committee.
Oh.
As the Rec Department.
As the Rec Department rep. Okay, got it.
No, no, he was as...
As a select board?
Select board.
Select board representative, because he was on the Recreation Commission, and he was there, represented the CTC for a while, but he was never a full member.
Voting member.
Representative from a different community, so.
All right. So there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And town manager appointments.
Move to confirm the town manager appointment of Karen Young of 49 Crest Street to the Commission on Disability for a term to expire May 31, 2022.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everyone.